This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. All those who are able, please stand. A pledge of allegiance will be offered by students from Lake Shore Elementary School. They are the brothers Isaac Jacobson from the fourth grade and Eric Jacobson, second grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Isaac and Eric. Tonight's meeting will be broadcast on Charter Channel 994, WRFP 101.9 FM, and online at Are we in compliance with open meeting law notifications?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call to verify the quorum.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll open the session with a public forum. Each person we allow will be allowed up to four minutes to address the board, providing that he or she has additional or new information that has not been previously shared at this meeting. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have Mr. Ben Holman as the first speaker.
Good evening and thank you. I wanted to thank the board and the administration for proceeding with the secure entrance at Roosevelt, and I do ask that you vote to approve the funding for the establishment of the planning and the construction of a secure entrance at Roosevelt next year. I'd also like to address the proposed interim security plan at Roosevelt. That was outlined by the administration at the last board meeting. I don't believe that the proposed door monitor will provide equitable security at our school. I'm not concerned with people not RSVPing to an event and being checked in with someone with a clipboard. I'm more concerned about deterring acts of violence at our school. I'm not -- donuts with dad isn't a problem. I want something that looks like robust security for our students. As long as Roosevelt does not have a good security plan, we really stick out among the other schools as the only one that is exposed, and I think that a dedicated resource officer would show that the school district is taking the security seriously. Even a part-time resource officer will have a deterrent effect. Before your last board meeting two weeks ago, North High School experienced a security threat. This morning, Menominee Middle School went on lockdown while a threatening message was investigated. We know, you and I know, that this is an issue that isn't going to go away, and I appreciated how seriously the board took the issue at the last board meeting. I hope that you'll continue to push for a school resource officer and don't give up on that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it for the public forum. Our next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to begin tonight by talking about the upcoming school board events. On September 24th at 1:00 p.m., there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee. On September 25th at 5:00 p.m., there will be a school board work session, and that work session is open to the public. It is about school governance. On October 1st at 7:00 p.m., there will be a meeting of the Family Advisory Council, and that will be the first meeting of this school year. On October 7th at 8:30 a.m., there's a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, and on October 7th, there's a school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. All of these meetings will be held in the Administration Building. Last week, we had 21 students who celebrated going into the Business Management Signing Day. Twelve of those students are from North and nine are from Memorial. Of these 21 students, five are sophomores and 16 are freshmen. Through ECASD's partnership with CVTC, these students have the unique opportunity to earn an associate degree in business management while they're still in high school. This will give these students an incredible head start on their path to higher education and really marks another outstanding milestone in our school district community. Because of the ECASD and CVTC partnership, students do not pay tuition to be a part of this program. There are no fees attached to this program, and they will earn transferable college credits. The graduates of this program in 2023 could finish their bachelor's degree in as little as two additional years after high school. So, it's a very exciting start for us, and we're really looking forward to seeing the success that these students will bring through this program. Also, last week, I was able to attend part of the Fall Superintendent's Conference presented by the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, and they covered a variety of topics at the event. They particularly looked at comprehensive school mental health systems. They looked at the ESA expenditure reporting and gave some suggestions for how that could be accomplished. We talked about the effects of educator effectiveness and how that is helping to raise the rigor in Wisconsin schools. There was a great deal of talk about supporting career readiness in schools, and it was kind of nice to be able to talk about some of the programs that we have here in ECASD. And there was quite a bit of talk throughout the conference about the difficulty in recruiting and retaining teachers in Wisconsin and the teacher shortage across the nation. And the new state superintendent talked at length about strategies that school districts might use to recruit high school students and teachers or staff who are not teachers now into the teaching profession. And I'm glad to say that we have some of those things going. And then finally, I want to let the board know that as directed, I met with the chief of police about the concerns that the families raised at Roosevelt. We talked about their concerns and some of the uncertainties that parents are expressing about the situations that they face every day when they send their children off to school at Roosevelt. He assured me that he will be fully discussing this with his staff and evaluating the resources that the police are able to give to this. We also discussed a lot of what we could do in the immediate future to work with school staff, parents, and students to increase not only the safety and security, but also the feeling of confidence and stability within the school. So, he and I are going to reconnect after he's had his conversation with the staff, and then we will begin working toward a solution. That's my report for the segment.
Thank you, Dr. Hardavec. The next point in the agenda is the board president's report. Mine is going to be short. The first one is to share that on Sunday, that's yesterday, Dr. Hardavec and I had the chance to attend the celebration of the GAP. That's the German-American Partnership Program that is celebrating 25 years of uninterrupted efforts to connect students from our school in Eau Claire with students in a school in Germany. I was really impressed by the numbers that they were able to report and was glad to meet with teachers and leaders of this program throughout the years. The leader for this year is Ms. Sarah Hitzinger-Poss, and she shared with us how exciting and important project this is since has demonstrated its ability to provide unique opportunities for students to develop intercultural relations and also early opportunities to figure out their professional futures. So, our congratulations to the program and to the leaders, especially Ms. Hitzinger-Poss. By the way, she's a German teacher at Memorial. I would like also to communicate that the Eau Claire Area School District Board of Education will conduct a national search for the district's next superintendent, and we have appointed Dr. Lori Becca, our board vice president, as chair of the search committee. The first stage of our process will involve gathering information from the Eau Claire Area School District staff and broader Eau Claire community to assist us in developing the superintendent profile we will use to advertise the position and recruit candidates. We are very excited about the process, and we will gather this input from meetings with staff. We will organize also public forums with district families and other community members. We'll also make available anonymous online surveys so we can reach out the maximum number of members of the Eau Claire community. We estimate that we will finalize a candidate profile and begin the active recruitment phase around November, and our application deadline will be planned for early January, with an expectation to make a decision on the position late April. So, we invite you to share your wisdom and your generous input with us in the process of defining the profile and then meeting with the candidates. That will be my report for tonight. Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is our student representative report. Morgan Priem from Memorial is with us tonight.
Hello. This week at Memorial, Memorial Student Council is currently in the process of signing up participants for their annual Red Cross blood drive. This is the first of two blood drives that take place at Memorial each year. Last Friday, many students led by Memorial's Eco Warriors Club during the international climate strike movement by participating in a walkout. The goal of this movement is to get Congress to declare a climate crisis and implement environmental projects and protections at a national level. Unfortunately, last week, we did experience a possible gun threat. However, there were students who saw the threat on social media and were able to report it immediately to our school resource officer, who dealt with it accordingly, and no classes were disrupted. As far as athletics, varsity football won against Chipewa, adding to a 3-1 conference season record. Girls Swim and Dive won their first swim meet of the season against Menominee. Boys and girls cross country competed at Menominee as well as in Wassa, taking home several individual medals and a second-place team trophy. Girls tennis remains undefeated, and boys soccer has been competing within the conference with a record of 3-0 and 2. Finally, girls volleyball is 1-1 in conference play. Auditions and role selections have taken place for this year's school play, which will be Shrek. And finally, Memorial will be celebrating homecoming this week. Celebrations include the varsity show, which features student talents, a pep rally, a parade with several bands from across the district, a football game against River Falls, and finally, the dance. This year's theme, selected by Memorial Student Council, is Decades. And that is my report for the week.
Thank you very much, Morgan. Congratulations on your participation in the life of the school in such an active way. Johnny Shong is not available tonight. The next point in the agenda is school board committee reports. So, we'll begin with Leap.
Leap met last Tuesday. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so while we had a great discussion, we weren't actually able to vote on anything. We discussed the committee's membership. We've recently lost a few teachers who left the district who were on the committee. So, we had a discussion about recruiting new teachers to take their places and then also staggering the terms of some of our members so we don't end up in a position where we have a lot of people gone. We also had an ozone representative there in Andy Brown. He represented the ozone team, and he came with all three middle school principals. They had been able to go out and meet with their respective schools about the ozone project, and the middle school principals that participated really created a lot of good thoughts and a lot of good discussion points at our meeting. We felt like we made a lot of progress in some of the thoughts, and one of the points was even if, from the discussion, they were able to take a lot of the methods that have been discussed and kind of turn them around and look at ways where they can engage the kids that they're trying to target. So, although it was a very good discussion, we weren't able to vote to do anything with the proposal. And then subsequent to that, the ozone team has asked us to put the proposal on hold for right now. I think they have cited just ongoing work of, that they want to complete ongoing work that the LEAP committee needs to continue to fine-tune their process. So, we look forward to having them back as soon as they're ready, and hopefully, we'll have a quorum that day, which is always frustrating. We understand that, but there's just, you know, nothing you can do. So, that's Leap.
Thank you very much. Budget Committee?
Yeah. Budget Committee is going to meet tomorrow, and we'll be talking about our timeline for the coming year of work on the committee, as well as working through a proposed timeline for the board, the full board, to consider. It will include work of compiling revenue and cost savings ideas, options that we hope the committee will be able to bring forward throughout the next coming months. So, that's what's up there.
Thank you very much. Demo and trends?
Anxiously awaits its next assignment.
Okay. Policy and governance. That would be me. We met this morning, and we approved a draft of, it was a very slight modification to our concussion and brain injury management, and it's ready for full board consideration for next, for our next session. We also invested some time in drafting a policy that is related to renewal, renewal energy and having more environmentally friendly operations for buildings and grounds, and buildings and grounds is going to enrich and tweak the drafted language that we considered this morning. We also discussed another policy to sort of provide guidance to how we handle our fund balance. So, we are proposing that we meet with Budget Committee and PNG in a work session to discuss fund balance and spending. Is that good? Okay. So, we'll proceed to do that as a future agenda item. And that's it for the policy and governance report. Am I missing? No? Thank you. The next point in the agenda is legislative update.
So, last meeting, I mentioned that one of the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations, changing how full-day 4K is funded, changing full-day students from half, counting as half-day to counting as a full, or half-student to counting as a full student for student funding, was on the horizon but had not yet been introduced. And over these last couple of weeks, two companion bills have been introduced. They are Senate Bill 408 and Assembly Bill 465. Education research is fairly clear that 4K is one of the most high-impact interventions that we can give to students, and ECSD has been told to expect a transition from, to requiring full-day 4K by both DPI and the Federal Head Start Program, although there's not been a formal timeline set for that. This bill may make it easier to make that transition, although we would still have some capacity issues to deal with, and I think we have a committee that's ready to tackle that. Also, less legislative and more legislators. The statewide results for standardized testing such as the ACT and the forward exams were recently released. Wisconsin public schools statewide saw a small decline in their reading and math proficiency. One reason that I'm bringing this up tonight is because legislators, especially those on the education committees, are, of course, reacting, and to that, there's a lot of discussion about the school funding involved in that, and of course, as you might expect, legislatures, legislators, excuse me, from either party are reacting somewhat differently. So, that conversation is in the air right now, and as always, we would ask you to reach out to your legislators and ask them to support ECASD and all Wisconsin public schools.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Nordine. The next point in the agenda is consent resolution. The board will consider approval of the consent resolution agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The consent resolution agenda for tonight includes minutes of September 9, 2019, minutes of closed session, September 9, 2019, 2018, 2019, budget adjustments, gifts in the amount of $18,274.03 for the period of August 1, 2019, through August 31, 2019, payment of all bills in the amount of $5,707,107.88, and net payroll in the amount of $3,210,166.63 for the period of August 1, 2019, through August 31, 2019, human resources report, and finally, secure entrance at Roosevelt. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second? A motion by Commissioner Klinkhammer and a second by Commissioner Harder. Let's do a roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved. Our next point in the agenda is adjourned to committee. Board committee reports. The school board allows public comment after each committee report to ask questions and/or request clarification on the topic of discussion. If you have an opposing viewpoint or wish to speak in support of an item, please sign up for the public forum section of the school board meeting at the next regular meeting. You must sign in five minutes before the school board meeting. The first report or item for discussion is the discussion on possible first reading of revisions to Policy 751.5, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. The red, the text in red is the new language. So, does anyone would like to volunteer to read it? Or shall I appoint you? Oh, Commissioner Klinkhammer, thank you.
Sure. I'll give it a go. Policy 751.5, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. Although transportation by school bus is the district's primary method of providing student transportation services, the district administrator or his/her designee may approve the district's provision of student transportation services via the use of a vehicle other than a school bus, provided that the use of such vehicles is done in a manner that is consistent with state law and applicable board policies. Alternative vehicles owned or leased by a school bus contractor. The district's contract with any school bus contractor shall account for the possible use of vehicles other than school buses that are owned or leased and operated by the school bus contractor. The contract shall specifically address how the contractor and the district will ensure compliance with applicable state law and with any additional requirements, for example, upward adjustments to minimum insurance levels that the district determines are in its best interest. If any district contract with a school bus contractor does not address the possible use of alternative vehicles as required by this paragraph, the contractor shall not use alternative vehicles to provide student transportation services on behalf of the district until a written addendum to the contract is executed. District employees authorized to drive an alternative vehicle to transport students. Specific administrative procedures shall be developed which shall be used to authorize a district employee to drive a privately-owned, district-owned, or district-leased motor vehicle to transport students within the scope of the individual's employment. No district employee who has not been authorized to do so under the district's procedures shall use a motor vehicle to transport students in carrying out or in connection with any job-related duty. Specific administrative procedures shall be developed which shall be used to authorize a non-student volunteer driver who is at least 21 years of age to transport students under the conditions that they possess a valid operator's license, have a driving record clear of moving violations for the previous 12 months, accidents, failure to report accident, any license suspension, or felony from the operation of a vehicle for the previous three years, and under the influence of alcohol drugs for the previous five years. Possess fitness to drive as evidenced by a medical opinion rendered at least once every three years. Have sufficient use of both hands and foot normally employed to operate foot brake and foot accelerator. Vehicle requirements. Under no circumstance shall the district authorize a district employee or volunteer to provide student transportation using an alternative vehicle that is manufactured to accommodate more than nine passengers in addition to the driver. Does not have a sufficient number of number of permanently mounted and forward-facing seats for each passenger, was manufactured more than 20 model years ago, or is a homemade, street-modified, or replica vehicle. This policy is not intended to apply to any situation where a parent or guardian is providing transportation solely to his/her own child, children, by means selected entirely by the parent or guardian. Students and/or parents or guardians otherwise make their own voluntary arrangements for transportation. That is, the transportation in question is not district-provided transportation. And then a bunch of statutory references.
Thank you very much. That's our first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then we'll...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry?
I think I saw, looks like maybe a missed typo on alcohol/drugs at the top of page two. Minor thing, just a typo.
If there is no more discussion, then we'll do a second reading on the next session. The next point in the reports is a discussion on possible first reading of proposed Policies 6, 7, 5, construction contracts. Anyone else would like to volunteer reading this draft? Commissioner Luganville?
Sure. It's not that long, I'll read it. For each construction contract or similar contract related to the construction, addition, modification, repair, or maintenance of district buildings or facilities, a construction contract, the Director of Buildings and Grounds shall be designated as the district's agent under the construction contract unless another individual is so designated in the Board of Education's motion to approve the construction contract, and shall have authority to sign construction contracts approved by the Board of Education. The Director of Buildings and Grounds shall have authority to execute change orders to a construction contract in an amount not to exceed 5% of the contract. Any change order in excess of 5% of the contract must first be approved by the superintendent. Further, any change order which would require the amendment of the budget pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 65.95A or is in excess of 10% must first be approved by the Board of Education. Each construction contract shall include language with respect to change orders and designation of the district's agent which is consistent with this policy. Consistent with the procurement manual, construction contracts shall be reviewed by the district's legal counsel for form and content. The Director of Buildings and Grounds and Executive Director of Administration shall monitor each construction project and keep the superintendent informed as to any change orders which may be required and any change orders which have been executed. This policy shall be construed as an additional requirement with respect to construction contracts and not in lieu of compliance with any other Board of Education policy or the procurement operations manual.
Any discussions, discussion about this proposed policy? Hearing none, then we'll do the second reading in our next session.
Sorry, minor typo.
Another typo, yes.
And third paragraph, is that format? The last... For... Okay.
Thank you very much. Our next item in the agenda is a budget update.
So while Abby is getting set up with her presentation, I want to talk to board members a little bit about what we've discussed and in terms of a mutual goal. And that has been to utilize our resources in such a way and align those resources to the strategic plan. I think uppermost in our minds and in the forefront has been the idea of strengthening our fund balance and more or less living within our means with the ultimate aim of having a financially healthy school district. Tonight, Abby Johnson will present a high-level view of the budget for 2019-20, fiscal year. And although it's still somewhat a work in progress, we are projecting a balanced budget based on the expected adjustments from the state on October 15. There are still a few decisions and priorities for you to establish, but I think you'll see that through some of the cost reductions and some of the steps that we've taken in terms of developing our budget this year, that we are in a much healthier financial state this year than we have been in previous years. And we look forward to strengthening that fund balance.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. So a couple of fun facts that we'd like to talk about and I'll remind the board and our community of is that Eau Claire is the eighth-largest district in the state of Wisconsin. As of the second Friday count in January, we had 11,331 students and we had 21 school buildings. In 1819, our spending ranked at number 258 out of 421 districts. And the, our, the state average pupil spent was $10,677, and we were at $10,434. We talked a lot about this during the referendum and how short we were. And even with our referendum, you can see a couple of years down the road that we're behind the state average again, about $243. And overall, we have an operating budget of about $145 million. Does definitely provide some challenges with living within the revenue cap that was set in 1993 because I think we've always been a fiscally responsible school district and we've very much watched how we have spent our funds along with guidance from the board as well in our strategic plan. So currently, as of today, I wanted to share with you where our tax levy is for the 1920 year. So when we looked at the 1920 budget, the adopted budget had a tax levy of $8.52 per thousand dollars of equalized value. Today, our projection is at $8.58, which is six cents higher than what it was last year. What does that mean? And so if you look at approximate value of $150,000 home, it's a $9 increase to the taxpayers, and that's as of today. We know it's going to change once we get those final numbers on the October 15th, but it's good news and we like to share that with our board and our community. So there's a little bit of fluctuations. I know we've talked in the past about the debt service and we have a debt drop coming off in the next few years. And so you can see this year, the levy for debt service, referendum and not referendum, is almost identical to what it was last year, $7,500 in difference between the two. Fast forward a year, in two years, it's going to look different because of those debt drops. But the good news is that with some additional state aid and the funding that is additionally coming in that we'll talk about a little bit later, that definitely does have an impact to our taxpayers and our community. So let's talk about our expenses and our operating expenses. So you can see our 1819 budget, we had a total budget including the Special Education Fund of $161 million. In our current projections, our budget for 1920 is $162 million. So it's an increase of about four and a half mil, I'm sorry, 1.4 million. And so we highlighted on the screen, the red means that we are spending more and the black is, means we're spending less. So when we look at high level, our salaries and fringes, we're going to spend about $2.1 million more. That's in line with the strategic plan and the board's dedication to the high-quality staff. When we look at our contracted services, we are anticipating spending about $600,000 less than we did last year. When we look at our supplies, our budget is $575,000 left, less than it was. And keep in mind, that is really as a direct result of leasing the iPads for the upcoming year. Last year, we purchased them and that was about $700,000. And this year, we're leasing them to the tune of about $100,000. So that's really what that difference is coming through. When we look at capital, in 1819, we projected to spend about 1.3 million. We're expecting to spend about 1.2 million, a difference of $101,000. Our insurance, I'd love to say that our insurance is going to be spending less, but as we've completed referendum projects and added new, newer equipment, that cost is going up. And we'll share some highlights of that as we get later on into the presentation. But that line item in our budget's up about $26,000. When we analyze our special education and our transfer to Fund 27, last year, we budgeted just over $17 million and this year, about $500,000 more. Most of that cost is really meeting students' needs in the salary infringe area to meet those IEP requirements that we need to meet in order to be in compliance with the DPI rules. And then when we look at debt dues and other fees, we're going to spend, we think, about $2,000 more than we did last year. And so that's really the breakdown of the additional 1.4 million that we're anticipating spending in the 1920 year. If we look at the FTE, as far as the makeup of our staff, you can see that in 1819, we budgeted for about $1,405 FTE, and our current budget is $1,415 FTE. And you can see the bulk of that comes with our teachers and our hourly. And again, those numbers are going to be finalized as we're certifying the third Friday count. And so this might look a little bit different a month from now when we're talking about that. So, which makes sense because as those counts are finalized, we may need to add some staff in areas that aren't meeting our targeted class sizes. If we dig a little bit into the detail of the differences in the contracted services, this is just kind of the high-level buckets of how the contracted services break down. And so when we look at professional development, we are anticipating spending about $500,000 less in 1920 than what we budgeted in 1819. Our transportation, we're estimating our cost to be up about $146,000. Software costs about $4,500. Open enrollment, right now, we're estimating we'll have less spent about, by about $64,000? Did I get that right? Yes. But that number will change with that October 15th aid certification. So we based upon what we know now, but then it's that certification process that could impact that number moving forward. Substitutes, we are anticipating spending more on our substitutes. That just, it ebbs and flows every year, so we look at a three-year average. And so that is one cost that's really hard for us to predict, but we do try to look at what is the trend and what do we know when we're building the budget. Utilities, we're anticipating spending about $77,000 less than we did. And when we look at the other contracted services, it's just a bunch of everything else, lots of little dollars making up that difference of the 436. Yeah, and so because we're spending less in this area, that offsets costs that we're spending more in other areas. When we talk about the supplies, again, these are just some high-level, those big buckets that fall under supplies. And when we look at the general supplies, we are going to spend about $78,000 more. Apparel, that's going to be anywhere from uniforms for athletic teams and uniforms that we use across the district. And so we're anticipating those costs to be a little bit more. Some of those costs are offset from the booster clubs, and so it just depends upon what year you're in for that rotation. And so that will fluctuate each year. When we look at equipment, costs of less than $5,000, we are expecting that we'll spend more this year in that area than we did. And then non-capital technology and non-capital hardware, again, we're anticipating spending less of that, and that's really going to be due to the iPads and the laptops that were approved earlier by the board. Our capital outlay and our capital projects that we've got, in our 1819 budget, we had about $1.3 million and this year of about $1.2. You can see a big difference in that replacement equipment column. Those are things that we've been deferring for several years, and a big chunk of that is related to buildings and grounds. We've, we're, we have some vehicles that are just no longer usable, and so we know we're going to need to replace them, and some of them, we've been delaying two to three years. And so we have about $340,000 just in that B&amp;G area that we really need to get replaced in the 1920 budget. And then if you'll remember, the, the big difference in this category is the building and site improvements. And if you remember, the capital improvement plan, we usually budget about $1.6 million. But last summer, we really focused on getting those referendum projects done. And so we really had very few projects going on. The focus was the culinary labs. And so that brought about, about a $900,000 savings to our budget that we'll see at the very end as well. Insurance, kind of as I alluded to before, with adding secure entrances and just some of the updates to our buildings, our property insurance is going up by about $38,000. Liability, that's just, you know, different things that we're exposed to, and that's, we're expecting that to go up, just over $14,000. Our workers' comp, again, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, but we do have a trifecta program in place. And so if we have an injury that happens during the work day or on the work site, we have a triage nurse that is called immediately, and then they really help them diagnose and figure out what steps do they need to do, and we try to get them back to work as quickly as possible. And I think working with that program for the last five to six years, we've been seeing a big budget impact because we're, we have less time off of work due to work-related injuries. And so that really does help offset the cost of our workers' comp, and it brings that premium down since we were losing less and less time on the job. So overall, it's about a $26,000 increase in that insurance area. And then when we look at debt and other dues and fees, dues and fees is really like student entry fees and competitions and district dues that we're required to pay. And so that's going to be spending about $28,000 less. But in that debt area, we're going to spend about $30,000 more, and that's really the result of the capital lease. We had some savings with moving to the line of credit last year, and now with having the lease last year, those two are balancing out, and that's really essentially where that $30,000 that we'll be spending more is coming from in that line item. And so overall, that line item is going to be, we're anticipating about $2,400 more spending. So let's switch and talk about the revenue. I think I shared a little bit about this at the last board meeting as well. But overall, when we look at our local source, which is really the big piece, is our property taxes, we're expecting to get about $317,000 more in our levy. The revenue that comes from other districts, we're expecting that to be down by about $23,000. The inter-districts, I'm sorry, the intermediate source, those are just different things that we do that come through Ccel, like Head Start comes through that line item. And so we're anticipating about $117,000 less. Some of that could also just be timing of when we get the award and we know when it's coming. When we look at state, we're getting about $3.5 million more. The biggest piece of that is our state aid is up about $2.5 million, and then we're getting about $1 million more in the per-pupil aid that was changed with the legislative adjustments that happened. When we look at our federal source, again, that's going to be federal grants that are coming in. And so we're anticipating right now about $760,000 less. There's probably some more awards coming that we just don't have yet, and that's really a timing thing. And that doesn't, whatever we have in revenue is what we also have budgeted in expense, so it's kind of a wash on both sides of revenue and expense. We talked about the Special Education Fund 27, in that we're projecting an additional $500,000 for that in the next year. And then other revenue, we're expecting about $700,000 more, and that's just between rebates that we get for our US bank and different things, forfeitures that come out of, things that are related to the defined contribution. And then at the last board meeting, it was chosen to move forward with the sale of Little Red. And so we line item that out to be able to show that to the board that we're expecting $619,740 in revenue from selling that building. So when you compare the budget of 2018-19 to the current budget, we're expecting about $4.8 million more in revenue in the 1920. And again, we know some of these numbers are going to change with that October 15th certification, but wanted to give you an update as to where we were today. So rounding out the big picture, what does that look like? And so you can see, and you'll remember, in 1819, the board adopted about a $3.2 million deficit. And where we're sitting at today with the current numbers I just shared with you, we're projecting a $229,000 surplus. And so, you know, that does include the sale of Little Red. And just keep in mind that we're still reconciling and reviewing, and every day, we're analyzing that budget again to make sure we um, analyzing that budget again to make sure we haven't missed anything. Um, we do have some items that we need additional guidance and we wanted to make sure that the board is aware of that, um, we've either taken them out of the budget or they, you know, we need some direction from the board. Um, but we're in a good place as Dr. Hert of X said and we continue to work on that. And, um, you know, it's that moving target right now, but we're sitting, um, in a, um, projected surplus right now, which has been our goal, um, to bring a, a balanced budget forward at this time. So what isn't included or what changes have been made to get to that balanced budget? Um, so these are the list of things and there shouldn't be anything that really surprises the board because we've been talking about them for quite some time. Um, band instruments, um, you know, we've been talking about the refresh and about three years ago, we said we were going to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And I think we did that the first year and then last year, we did fifty thousand and right now, I don't have anything in the budget for that at all. So that would be, you know, just again, an awareness that we don't have anything in there right now. Um, band uniforms, um, two years ago, or maybe three years ago now, we replaced Memorial High Schools and the plan was to, um, refresh North's after that. Um, and the refresh happened at Memorial, but not at North. And so if we were anticipating doing that, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, there were about twenty-three hundred dollars, uh, removed from the budget requests of equipment items when we were working with departments. Um, they said, yep, we can do without this for the next year. Um, the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, uh, that you'll be discussing after my presentation and so that's why it's on the list because it's currently not included in the budget. Um, we could have additional staffing needs that come up through the certification of the third Friday count. And so I can't put a value on that because I don't know today what that would look like. Um, but we would obviously, if we need to make those adjustments, that will be in there, um, after we get that certification on October fifteenth. If we look at, um, computer equipment, so as we were initially reviewing, um, the budgets and things that were requested, we, um, have revised the budget, just in the computer equipment area, to the tune of one point two million dollars. And that's really been related to staff devices and some upgrades needed at auditoriums across the district. And so, um, in working with the tech department, we felt that that could be delayed a bit longer, again, to bring that balanced budget forward. Um, we also had requests for iPads for the art teachers. It's a different kind of an iPad and it's used specifically for instruction. And again, that was part of the discussion when we were reviewing the budgets early on and so that has been removed from the budget request and not included in the budget I brought forward tonight. Um, in buildings and grounds, um, there were a couple of items that, um, as we were reviewing the budget, they felt could be delayed. And so that's about twenty-six thousand five hundred, that's not reflected in this current budget. And then the other piece that we would need some direction on the board is the, um, fifty thousand dollar, uh, contribution that we make to the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. Um, we had provided some additional information that we had learned about and so currently that's not in our budget and we would need guidance from the board if we would, if you expect us to put that back in. And we just wanted to make sure we're being transparent that that isn't currently in there based upon the information that we shared previously. And then a friendly reminder of all these things that are happening between now and the end of October, when you formally adopt a budget. Um, again, just, I already highlighted the staffing and the third Friday count. Our state aid numbers finalized, our computer aid numbers finalized, which then, um, we calculate our tax levy on. Our transportation may change as well because that's tied to our revenue limit increase or decrease. Open enrollment because that's certified to us on October fifteenth. And just that ongoing budget reconciliation that we continue to look at, um, over the course of the next couple of weeks. And so just to finish with one really fun fact is that if we were spending at the state average, um, at our students from last year, at that two hundred and forty-three dollars, we would have about two point seven million dollars more, um, in our budget. And so it doesn't seem like it makes a big difference, but in the big scheme of things, it really does make a big difference. So with that, how can I answer your questions?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank, uh, Abby for the report and just highlight a fact that is clear to me, um, is not that we are receiving a greater state aid, of which we don't have, uh, control and actually we appreciate. But, um, I think that decisions made earlier, uh, have put us in a, in the right position to benefit from it, uh, to a greater extent. Uh, and were good decisions, uh, as to how to handle, uh, our budget, uh, including, um, uh, contracted services, uh, diminishing that number, uh, how we get our supplies in a more efficient way, uh, our capital decisions, uh, decisions as not to fill FTEs, um, with definitive, uh, teachers, but, um, um, calling retired teachers to help us in that, uh, role. Uh, workers' compensation, something as, it, it, it could look as small, but, you know, deciding to go for a line of credit rather than, um, borrowing. All that adds up and puts us in, in this, uh, position. So we are very grateful for that consistent work of being fiscally responsible. Questions or commentaries for Abby? Commissioner Bu?
It might be a early discussion, but I want to double check. So we have some items that are not currently included, but then we have a small surplus. You must have been thinking about how to include, that currently not include, because those are items that potentially, if we keep on defer or not include, it will hurt us later on. And I, if, if it were to include all the items here, which some of them may be necessary, we may not have that surplus. So if you were to, um, identify what's really needed from that list, what would that be?
That's a great question. Um, I would really need to talk with my colleagues as well because we had some pretty in-depth conversations early when we were building the budget and trying to figure out, you know, what do we absolutely need to, um, move forward for nineteen-twenty and what do we think that we can either figure out a way to work through it or, you know, how can we phase it in? Um, so we did a lot of that, you know, bringing forth the, I, the leases for the technology equipment and trying to be impactful for the budget. Um, I mean, I think band instruments is a, is a big deal, you know, because we had kind of made a commitment that we were going to do that. But I think it really does depend on funding every year and what can we do? Because I know that we're all very concerned about continuing deficit spending. And so one, our goal again, like Dr. Hertebek mentioned, was to bring forward a balanced budget. Um, and so, you know, this was one of the ways that we got there was really evaluating all of those requests and having some of those tough conversations before we came forward with it, um, just to make sure what can we do? Um, because there's always going to be needs and there's going to be needs that are going to come up that we don't even have identified yet throughout the year. And so, um, it's really hard for me to answer that honestly, just because there's so many moving parts, so. But you're absolutely right. If all of that was included, we wouldn't have a surplus on the, on the books at all.
So one of the things that I would say to the board is that our, probably our most pressing need will be in staffing. Um, I think, you know, we, we've talked a lot about in our strategic plan, the importance of high-quality staff and having highly qualified, um, staff working with our students. So if we find through our third Friday count that we need additional staffing, certainly I think that would be our recommendation, uh, because we want, you know, really good people in front of our kids. All of the things that are on that list are things, with the exception of, um, the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, um, some of the computer equipment, um, certainly, um, the, um, foundation, building and gra, these are things that we have talked about, you know, before in terms of having to make adjustments in our budget. And, you know, last year, you did make the decision to go into our fund balance to be able to do some of these things, but many of these things that were on this list were deferred from last year and may be deferred again, depending on the direction that you give us. So I think the, the one thing that, that would be helpful to us as a staff is that as we have worked on the budget, we have felt confident in taking the steps that we had because we've had discussions, uh, in those areas. But these things kind of hang out there and linger and, you know, just as last year, we talked a little bit about the need for band instruments and that was deferred so we could continue with our mentor program. So now this year, we're able to, you know, fully fund our mentor program without having to do an either or. So again, the band instruments are out there. So, you know, it's, it's again, it's about making those choices, uh, if we do indeed, um, get the benefit of the surplus that we're projecting.
Dr. Nordin?
I have, uh, one, I think, quick question and then maybe a little bit longer one. One, uh, about a two hundred thousand dollar surplus, did we just spend that by approving the secured entrance at Roosevelt? An essential expenditure, but is that, that's not in any of these, right?
That's correct. And it actually won't be impactful to that because it's in our five-year capital plan and that's the twenty-twenty-one five-year capital plan.
Thank you.
And so that's one piece of it.
All right. Um, second of all, um, you already mentioned Little Red as a one-time, uh, so if we took Little Red off of the board, then we would be, um, and I also, you know, you said that there was, what, seven hundred thousand dollars in savings or four hundred and fifty? I'm not sure how to quite read it for non-capital, for the, the leasing option. And of course, that will eventually catch up to us because all of the other technology that would need to be refreshed next year and the, then eventually we'll have to, so it's kind of a deferred payment, but those, those are some items that are then going to impact like future budgets because they're going to start, you know, we won't save as much money next year on technology. We won't have Little Red sale next year. Um, so that's something that we're, and that would, you know, dip us down, we'd be a million dollars behind. So fantastic that we have a balance for this year. Are there other items that we need to be thinking about that are for sure going to be up next year or that are sort of one-times? Like this technology savings is a little, is short-term, good for now, but it will eventually catch up?
Those are the two things, you know, that kind of come to mind, um, right off the top of my head. I mean, I think that there's always other areas to be considered and that you're thinking about. Um, but those for sure would be the one-time things that we're thinking about. Um, I'm sure I can come up with a list of more, but off the top of my head, I, that, yeah. But good observation and yes, you're correct. And that's kind of why we line itemmed out, especially the sale of Little Red because that is going to have a budget impact for one year.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Abika?
So as the board representative to the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the granting cycle, uh, the foundation is still accepting applications through September thirtieth for small grants. And I know that schools, you know, information comes out, but it's very timely. Um, not many days left, but still it's, it's open and having reviewed, reviewed those grants myself, I was just, I really, really encourage people to apply.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Harder?
Thanks for this report and thanks for finding a balanced budget. Um, you know, the work of the Budget Development Committee is, is what's on my mind here. Um, and when we look at questions like, which of these items might we, you know, how are we going to deal with these sort of open items? What is the list of open items? And also continuing, I think, along with what Commissioner Nordin said was, uh, I would agree with is this is fantastic projection and, um, but it, and it puts us in a much better place than it looked like we might have been, which is fantastic. But what, you know, looking ahead two years, five years, you know, how do we feel? And I, I, I see that as the work of the Budget Development Committee over the next, uh, few meetings is to, to try to help assemble that as, for the board as a whole to consider. And, uh, I guess I'd like to put it to the board that that's what we're going to be doing and it's a good time to maybe move us in another direction if you have other thoughts about how to, how we should be spending our time. But for me, this is, this is kind of it is, uh, what are the cost savings? What are the revenue ideas? That was, uh, you know, as I mentioned, that's, that's on the agenda for tomorrow. I think that will continue to be on the agenda for tomorrow, but in, with a brighter cast to it, given, given this term, so. Again, if, uh, that, you know, that planning work is, is what I see as the work of the Budget Development Committee as chair, but I'm very open to other thoughts on, uh, things we should be focusing on in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hardbeck?
I just wanted to remind the board of, you know, one thing and I think that, that is the unpredictability of school funding in Wisconsin. Um, the thing that is so challenging about creating a budget from year to year and to Dr. Nordin's point is we don't know what next year will bring. You know, we don't know if we'll face cuts again or if there will be additional funding put into public schooling, which we have our fingers crossed. Um, but it, it does make it very challenging for the staff and for the board to do long-range planning because it's so up in the air at this point. And I just wanted to kind of bring that out again.
Yeah, I was simply asking about, um, like known one-time sort of cost savings that we, you know, obviously we can't anticipate some of those other things, but there were a couple of items where we can say, we're not going to sell Little Red again next year, so we know we'll have to find a place for that or the technology will increase in cost. Those sorts of items are what I was interested in, but thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Our, our, our next item in the agenda is Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention Discussion.
Good evening. So, um, at Budget Development, uh, the funding for the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention came to that committee, uh, for discussion, um, sorry. No one will ever know you're here.
Yeah, just don't mind me.
Came to that, that group for discussion and they then wanted to, um, have a broader discussion today, um, with, with the whole board. Um, we're going to share some information regarding, um, the, the reason why, um, this has been brought to the, uh, school board for a funding request, um, and then provide an opportunity for you to have a discussion. So consider the first few slides as the beginning of your conversation with one another about, um, funding and, and any questions that Kaiying or I can, um, clarify would be, um, we'll take that opportunity at the end of our, of our presentation. So Kaiying's going to begin to give a little bit of background of the, um, of the program itself and then I will dip into the piece about the funding and the, the financials and then we'll take your questions.
Good evening. So as Jim said, it's our goal tonight to be able to provide you with a little bit of information so that you have some more information as you have a discussion, uh, regarding this topic. So the Alliance Council of Representation has the partners that you see on the board here. It's important to note that the Alliance came into existence through a federally funded drug-free communities grant, um, that has been what has kind of held the group together for the last decade. Um, as you can see, the Eau Claire Area School District is a key partner in all of this work. And we have a diverse group of, um, folks at the table because people understand that it takes a village to help with substance abuse disorder. So what does the Alliance do? Um, the grant has allowed the Alliance to hire a full-time prevention specialist, um, to work on coordinating and leading presentations throughout the county, uh, for the last several years to address substance abuse disorder. Their work addresses prevention, collaboration efforts and increases education and awareness to our families and our students throughout the community, as well as works to build a healthy community development and culture for our, um, communities. As far as the Eau Claire School District, we have certainly benefited from this grant along with the work of the Alliance. Um, specifically, we have currently a point one FTE, as you can see there, that has worked with all of our, our two high schools in particular, to really connect the work that we do at our high schools to the work that's also in the our high schools to the work that's also in the community, and to address the initiatives that are coming out of the Alliance group, and to be able to share that information with our key partners, as well as our high schools. Specifically, the AODA coordinator that we have hired with the .1 FTE through this grant works directly with our high school SAD chapters. SAD stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions, focused on peer-to-peer education. And so through that group, our SAD advisors at the two high schools receive yearly trainings to be able to work with their students. They collect and share data to use within the work that we do. And then they also look at data such as the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that our high school and middle school students take every other year, as well as state and national data. So they really are person with that small .1 is able to pull together all of that work and then work with the community alliance to be able to make sure that we have the latest education and the best practices with regards to working with our students in this arena.
So the grant for the county, the federal grant, ends at the end of this month. And so without the funding extra, another source of funding, that work will end. And so, as we mentioned, it helps fund that .1 AODA coordinator for the district, but also funds staff at the county to do that coordination and that outreach effort. And then, again, they're asking for that outreach from different partners. And so the last slide, and Commissioner Luganbill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that a calculation was made where it was $2 per student for school districts, and then it was 30 cents per resident at the county and for the municipalities, so for the county and for the city. And so a calculation was made by the committee to, and that's how the breakdown of dollars was created, Eau Claire County obviously being the largest representation. And then, so the district of Eau Claire, on this, if you, so this is, would rank as the second highest contributor to the fund. So that is just the brief background, and I'm, we're here to entertain any questions that you might have regarding any details we might not have included, and also to provide you an opportunity to have a discussion with one another that may or may not lead to a consent agenda item in the future.
Questions or commentaries from the board? Commissioner Luganbill?
Yeah, I would just like to speak to this a little bit, having the perspective of a board member, but also, the Alliance allows for board members of the various members to be members of the Alliance Council. So when I first joined the school board, I joined the Alliance representing the district along with, who was on it at the time, Catherine Dux. So we were the two representatives from Eau Claire School District. And as someone who's sat around that table and been involved in that way for the past couple of years, the work that is done through the Alliance is really essential and really crucial. And like was said in the presentation, there is no other youth-oriented AODA program, AODA prevention program, working with youth in the entire county. And as we know, within our schools, this is an issue of great importance. So it's unfortunate that the federal grant is ending. The fact, so the Alliance has received it for the last 10 years. It's a five-year grant, and you're eligible to be renewed once. It's a very steep hill to climb to get those, that funding for another five years, and the Alliance got it. And that speaks to the viability of that organization. It also is valuable for us that the Health Department has served as the fiscal agent for the Alliance for the past five years of the program. So it's a really strongly supported program, and, you know, with this budget ask, to me, it's a, yes, it's $22,600, but to me, this is crucial funding to provide for them because of what it provides in return for us. Of course, it provides the coordination of all of the SAD programs throughout the schools, the FTE, but also, I think what is most important that is provided through Alliance programs is the data that we get from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is data that it goes everywhere, it goes all the way up to DPI. And that data really helps drive evidence-based decision-making within the school district and then within the community around substance abuse challenges that youth are facing and families are facing, and what can we do moving forward. So I just wanted to share that perspective as a board member, but also as a board member who's been representing our district with the Alliance since 2015. And I definitely think it's worth our investment for this year that it's kind of in flux because of the federal funding ending.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Just a couple of questions. So you said we were, or the Alliance received the grant for the first term and then received it for the second. If, is there a time period where if they do not receive it, they can reapply and start new terms? Do you know, Joe?
There, in some respects, yes, and in some, no. So it cannot be the same entity. That would be the fiscal agent that would apply for it. So, for example, currently, the fiscal agent is the health, the Eau Claire City County Health Department. So the Eau Claire City County Health Department could no longer be the fiscal agent applying for another drug-free communities grant. However, in a year from now or a little more, when that grant cycle reopens, could a different funding entity be the one to apply for drug-free communities funding? Yes. However, that's not an opportunity that's in front of the Alliance right now. And so, but yes, that is an opportunity down the road. It would have to be a different fiscal agent, though. It could be similar partners. It could be a similar mission and vision, but it would have to look different as far as the entity itself.
Right. Because I guess I'm just thinking about the, well, I have a couple other questions, too. To have a sustainable program, you can't just rely on granting all the time because, as you've seen, I mean, grants go away, grants change, right? So does the Alliance have a long-term plan for funding? Is that what we're looking at? Is that their long-term plan for funding is this? That's one question I have. And then, I think I understood correctly that the funds that they collect here are really about providing a salary and resources for that one coordinator. And then, is, you know, is that correct? And then, my other question is, is there something similar that the district supports in the sense of, do we have precedence for doing something like this? Or is this something new out of the gate? We've never been asked to support, you know, a coordinator in another entity. And so those are, I guess, the three questions I might have.
I can answer a little bit. So the .1 FTE costs about $10,000, so this is a little under $10,000 for that part of the funding. They also, does pay for the human resource at the county. There's also some supplies and training that I think collectively is about $11,000 between the two items. Also, to be clear, too, is YRBS would not go away, but the coordination through this would. So we just would have to find a different way to do that coordination, but the survey itself would not disappear. But again, the coordination piece. As for the precedent piece, I don't know the answer to that. I can't think of off the top of my head where we had a similar request, but someone else might have a longer history than me.
Commissioner Harder?
I mean, the closest thing I can think of is the foundation, which is more, much more, well, in some ways, is more direct, only exists because of the district, whereas this has a broader umbrella, I think. But I had a question about the, just the calculation of the, you said it was $2 per student, and where did that come from?
Yeah. Actually, I was not at the table, so I think, Commissioner Luganbill, you might, I think that was a discussion that was, that was the Alliance, that was at those meetings, correct?
Yeah. Sustainability has been one of the main topics of the Alliance over the past year because they knew that the funding would be reaching its sunset. But, so it's really looking at things in phases. Of course, this is the, this is where it is right now, where it's at, looking for the institutional support from all of the, basically, the member organizations or the organizations which receive some form of institutional support or partnership. But then it's looking more down the road at what are other opportunities? The Alliance is one of the members of what's called the Northwoods Coalition, which is a coalition of all of the substance abuse organizations in this region of the state. And that organization is also looking at what can we do moving forward to support these efforts? Because obviously, the federal funding is temporary. We were one of two entities in the state to have received that funding for a long period of time, which was incredible that we were able to get that. It's a very competitive grant. But, yeah, it's, so that, as far as that sustainability question, as far as the piece of precedence, I don't know if there's an example quite like this. But I do, I think probably the closest, because this would be a relation, this is a financial transaction between school district and county serving as fiscal agent to this organization, I think I would, perhaps, you could, you could say, it's not, it's apples and oranges, but I think an example would be like the relationship with having SROs because there's a percentage that's paid and covered and managed through the city of Eau Claire, a percentage the school district pays. They provide a service, city at large, there's still technically officers of the Eau Claire Police Department that can be called out of the school and, you know, be there for things outside of the day, but then ultimately, they're serving the school. So I would think of it, perhaps, that being one example, but I don't think there's an example quite like this.
I did think of one standing here, but it's not perfect, would be like CISA.
Sure.
Where you have a centralized service offering multiple agencies.
Just a question so that may help us think about this a little bit deeper. In the time of decision-making, where does the Eau Claire School District decisions influence the rest of that list? In other words, are we the last to decide? Are we in the middle or be the first? Our decision, will that drive the rest of the decision? Or are we the, what happens if one person doesn't vote, doesn't come through? Do we have that information?
Is there anyone that has that information?
Actually, Denise Worth from the county is here and could answer that.
Hi. So that is a really good question. We have approached all of the school districts in Eau Claire County, and they are all very favorable and said that they will, that it fits their mission and vision, and they will commit money towards this new model. It is a new model. It's a sustainability kind of model, so it's not, it's pretty exciting, actually, because we have an opportunity to do things differently. We've been doing things similar for the last 10 years. Now it's time to probably take a check of what is out there and what we need to do. So it's pretty exciting that people value the work that we do. And basically, what we're doing is working on prevention of our youth. And if I can speak a little bit to the amount of money that the Eau Claire School District is being asked for, is really, you have the bulk of our youth. And, as you know, drugs just don't go away because we had a grant for 10 years. So we need to have that funding be sustainable, and we thought this might be a great partnership model to be asking of the community if they can give a little bit to it, and we can really make a big difference.
Dr. Vika?
So I, do I understand you to be saying, really, in answer to Commissioner Klinkhammer's question about, this is your model going, this is the model going forward?
Well, this is our model for right now, yes, and we would love to sustain this model. It does not mean we're going to stop looking for grants. It does not mean that we'll be looking at other opportunities to be able to influence the prevention efforts for substance abuse against youth. But this would be wonderful, and it is a new model, and it's quite innovative, I believe.
I understand how these entities, you know, arrived on this list, but what about other entities in the community?
Yes, we aren't done with our, this is just our preliminary or our work right now, and we have yet to, we are in the middle of asking for the healthcare organizations in our community. So yes, it is not all-inclusive.
So could you imagine a model where perhaps districts did not contribute to this extent, contributed to a lesser extent, and other entities joined on?
Potentially, that could happen. Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Thank you. So if I understood, you said the other school districts in Eau Claire County listed here have indicated their commitment to this. And then, the other entities on the list, what is the status of those, especially some of the bigger donors? Are they, are they also pretty committed?
Yes, so Eau Claire County has committed $40,000 annually for the prevention efforts of the Alliance, as well as the Health Department has committed a fair amount also. We are also committed to go into our fund balance preliminarily until we can find our sustainable funding for this prevention specialist.
So ECASD has, obviously, is not committed yet, but is there anybody else on this list who has not?
We have not approached the municipalities as of yet, or the healthcare institutions as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I appreciate the effort that you put together to respond to this need. This is a public health issue, right? What is the public health department doing for substance abuse prevention on its own?
A lot. This is just part of what we do, but this is, it is interesting because you would think the Health Department is in charge of prevention efforts for substance abuse for children or for youth. And you would just think that's what we do, and that the taxes pay for that, but it hasn't. We have not had that funding, only available through grant funding. So it, I get where you're, where it's confusing because it seems like it's part and parcel of what we should do, and now we're trying to make it part and parcel of what we do.
So are you saying that there isn't a person or an office that is in charge of substance abuse prevention?
There is with this grant.
Without the grant?
Not, no. I mean, we would have to find funding for a position. So we have $40,000, and the Health Department has contributed or has pledged money for it, but it isn't $125,000 a year like we have had for the last 10 years. Right?
So you said the Eau Claire district has the bulk of the youth? Were those the words that you used? Eau Claire has the bulk of the youth? Well, the Health Department has the bulk of the youth, too.
Absolutely. And we're all in, we're all in partnership together because we want to help our youth, your youth, the whole Eau Claire County youth, in not getting into trouble with substance abuse, which is very costly. And so prevention costs money, which people would like to probably put a fire out rather than prevent a fire, but we need to prevent addiction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, perhaps a logistical question. You said that the funding is soon going to go away, right? When is your deadline?
What is our deadline for what?
The funding. The funding that you have available will no longer be available?
September 30th.
September 30th. And what happens if you don't have a complete list of supporters by September 30th?
As I said before... As I said before, our Board of Directors have pledged that they would go into fund balance to be able, until we get funding.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience would like to make a question to this report or item for discussion? Hearing none, then thank you very much. Thank you Kane and Jim for the report. Our next item for the agenda is request for future agenda items.
I just have one.
Yes, Commissioner Luganbill?
Sorry, my microphone. I would just like to ask if we could put that Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention request on a future agenda to consider?
Thank you. Any other item? Hearing none, I'll remind you that the Agenda Setting Committee will meet tomorrow at 8 o'clock here in the central office. Now it's time to adjourn, it's 8:34. Adneek, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.